...research analyst position.
And what'd they say?
They said that it's currently closed, but they told me about similar position that I could look into. Of course, I would want to work for the city.
This is an amazing opportunity to be of service to 4 million people. And the things you do in Los Angeles with any kind of a background, whether it's political science, or history, or writing, or technology, or environmental studies, all comes together to make LA a better place for all of us.
For a listing of city jobs still available, log on to la-city.org. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The mayor's office is also aiming to diversify LA's tech workforce, hosting hackathons in South LA and Boyle Heights to encourage more young people of color to consider these careers. Well, it's one way to bring everyone on board to help solve our homeless crisis. Rasha Goel has more on how officials are encouraging Angelenos to become part of the solution.
Count me in. Are you ready to turn up for a hearing in your neighborhood to build housing?
Count me in!
Are you ready to find a parking lot where you worship, where we can park RVs and start to bring people home?
Count me in!
Are you ready to adopt a family and make sure, as they enter housing, that they don't fall back into homelessness?
Count me in!
City and county officials, along with other leaders, recently recognized the "Everyone In" campaign, the start of a United Way-led program aimed at shifting residents' attitudes about allowing housing for the homeless in their neighborhoods.
We will do three things. We will help people understand how they can be part of the solution. We will track our progress. And we will organize and activate the silent majority who have said yes to housing in their neighborhood.
According to officials, nearly 58,000 people sleep on the streets every day. And while much work needs to be done, city officials talk about the ongoing progress.
187 units of PATH Metro Villas are now underway along the Beverly-Virgil corridor right here in the 13th district. In total, as I speak, we have at least 314 units of supportive housing recently opened, near completion, or currently under construction, including 88 units at Mosaic Gardens, soon to open in Westlake. St. Anne's Beverly Terrace and Rampart Village, where we recently celebrated the opening of 39 units of supporting housing for women and families.
While more than two-thirds of voters backed Measure H and Measure HHH, which support building housing for the homeless community, many proposed projects have received fierce resistance from residents in communities ranging from Boyle Heights to Venice and from Temple City to San Pedro.
We now have a plan. We now have a partnership. We now have a city and a county that won't settle until people are fixing the streets instead of sleeping on the streets.
Officials hope the "Everyone" campaign will help people have a better understanding while keeping permanent solutions to homelessness moving forward. In Echo Park, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Goals include ending homelessness for 45,000 and preventing homelessness for 30,000 people, in addition to approving 5,000 units of supportive housing by July 2022. While you'll see a lot more shaved heads right now at the LA Fire and LA Police Departments, the reason? St. Baldric's, a fundraiser which just raised more funds for childhood cancer research. Anna Marcos looks at all the fun for a good cause.
Chief Charlie Beck put aside his badge and gun for a day to try on a hairdresser's gown and a pair of scissors, all in the name of charity.
I think it shows the heart of the city of Los Angeles when its police officers and firefighters get together to fight childhood cancer.
So instead of fighting fires and fighting crime, these volunteers at the St. Baldric's fundraiser, both young and old, are raising funds for childhood cancer research.
So much cancer research is oriented towards adults, and kids are often an afterthought. But thanks to the St. Baldric's community, that's changing, and kids are now getting a fighting chance.
Every year, the volunteers come to Fire Station 89 to cut hair or get their own mops cropped, the event a joint effort by the LA Fire Department and the LAPD.
We get behind it. We rally, and we want to raise as much money as possible to solve pediatric cancer.
I'm here because 16 years ago, my son had cancer, and I was feeling very helpless. There was nothing I could do as a father. And the St. Baldric's Foundation was doing a small event here at Fire Station 89, and I hooked up with the Fire Department. It's a way for me to do something.
And these volunteers are doing something. Since the fundraising event started in 2004, it has raised more than $234 million for childhood cancer research around the world.
You know, this is the only place that anybody will let me anywhere near scissors.
We think Chief Beck is liking his new job a little too much. Who knows? He might just have a new job waiting after retirement. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The St. Baldric's Foundation funds more in childhood cancer research grants than any other organization except the US government. Police say hate crimes in major US cities have increased for a third straight year. Gil Reyes reports from the Sherwood Awards honoring local law enforcement fighting the good fight. Detective Carlos Yamas.
This special team of LAPD officers is honored for nabbing a suspected serial vandal desecrating homes in Mar Vista, and for catching another accused of making threats against the Islamic Center in Mid-Wilshire. Both incidents occurred in 2016, both solved by the LAPD's Criminal Investigation Section, or CIS.
We have a lot of hats. We conduct a lot of investigations, all kinds of crime, mainly with a nexus to terrorism.
The Anti-Defamation League hosts their awards ceremony every year here at the Skirball Cultural Center to honor those law enforcement officials who've gone above and beyond the call in battling hate.
And we've selected four winners for today, and they will all be recipients of the Sherwood Prize. It's terrific to be able to honor them when you realize the incredible things that they have done, putting their lives on the line really to combat hate and bigotry.
The LAPD's Criminal Investigation Section is also praised for launching "End It, Don't Send It," a social media campaign reminding young people that making threats online is a felony, and you could be arrested.
I think over the last maybe three or four years, there has been a slight increase in hate messages going out via social media or directly to the various organizations.
Antisemitic incidents have actually been up around the country, almost 60% from 16 to 17. And when you have that kind of a spike, it's very important for people at the front lines to be paying attention, and the group of people here today are being honored because they were paying attention.
Look around here, and we have police agencies, prosecuting agencies from all over the Southern California region, all working together to be able to help make our society a better place for all to live in.
Reporting from the Sherwood Family Awards at the Skirball Cultural Center, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Sherwood Prize has honored the best in local law enforcement battling hate crimes since 1996. It's coming to downtown, a $3.2 million multicultural plaza across from Alvera Street. As Gil Reyes reports, the highlight will be a monument reminding visitors of the plight of people south of the border.
Downtown Councilman Jose Wezar unveils a largely-hidden piece of Mexican history, a father leaving his family behind to work in the United States. It's the story of Los Braceros.
It's not in our textbooks. No one ever talks about it, but it's probably one of the largest migrations that has ever occurred in the history of mankind.
The councilman says the United States welcomed millions of Mexican nationals to work mainly in agriculture from the 1940s through the 1960s. But Los Braceros, as they came to be known, also struggled with unfair wages and discrimination, even as they contributed to the US economy. The statue will be part of a 19-foot-tall monument, the centerpiece of a 7,000-square-foot plaza coming to Cesar Chavez Boulevard and Spring Street.
Anytime we see large-scale commercial buildings being erected in our city, even small-scale retail space, 1% of the square footage goes directly towards public art.
And timely art at that, created by sculpturist Dan Medina. The dedication comes as the Trump administration sues California for sanctuary laws protecting undocumented immigrants from deportation. Many of today's immigrants toiling in the fields, contributing to our economy, and under attack like Los Braceros were.
So I'm very proud to be a son of a Bracero. I'm very proud to be part of this project so that the city of Los Angeles and this country remembers their contributions.
In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Construction of the plaza is set to begin soon. Tributes to Native American, African-American, and other immigrant cultures are expected to be included. Over the past year, we've seen talented women take a stand against sexual harassment in Hollywood. Recently, others in the performing arts took the stage to express their needs. Gil Reyes reports from "In Her Words," an event hosted by Councilwoman Nuri Martinez.
A night of dance, song, and poetry, all told from the female perspective.
It's just another way for women to come and express their views on feminism and what it is to be a woman in Los Angeles. And it takes it out of stuffy room that we're usually accustomed to. It's kind of nice to have a nice, open venue.
Councilwoman Nuri Martinez hosted the extravaganza known as "In Her Words." It took place at City Hall's outdoor forecourt to cap off Women's History Month.
We're taking wins and not one loss, creating STEM programs, running for office.
Spoken-word artist and cancer survivor Jennifer J.B. Beasley.
Tonight, I perform the spoken-word piece entitled "Black Woman Commandments," and I want the world to know the awesome and amazing things that Black women are doing in the city.
Men are dominating in film, right? Even as producers of a podcast, we know that there's very few of us out there. So for us, having our voice is setting the narrative for young girls to really do something new.
I want to reach young women, and I want not only people who want to run for office, but women who want to lead the way. We need more women to be active, to be active participants in their own communities, and to speak up and speak out loudly and make sure that they know that this is a place for them to come and share their views.
Reporting from City Hall's forecourt, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city moves one step closer to regulating short-term rentals. LA gets top billing as a leader in solar energy, and LA Sanitation has awarded a multimillion-dollar grant. All these stories in City B. A Los Angeles City Council Committee approved a set of potential regulations for short-term rentals. The panel had been trying since 2016 to craft a policy that pleases both short-term rental hosts, who say their livelihood depends on the practice, and critics, who say it's contributing to the city's housing shortage and adversely affecting the quality of life in some neighborhoods. The committee approved a proposed ordinance that would limit the number of rental days per host to 120 days a year, but also create a discretionary process which would allow hosts to appeal for additional days that could allow them to rent for the entire year. Such exemptions could be granted if hosts meet certain criteria, including that the property has not been the subject of any recent nuisance violations. Councilmember Jose Wezar, who chairs the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, said he believed the regulations would help the city prevent problem-party houses from continuing to operate. Mayor Eric Garcetti helped unveil this 2.21-megawatt solar installation on the roof of the South Hall of the Los Angeles Convention Center, which he touted as the largest solar system of any publicly-owned convention center on the West Coast. Garcetti also announced that LA has the most installed solar power of any city in America. Garcetti cited the city's number-one ranking in a new Environment California report, which says LA now has nearly 350 total megawatts of installed local power. That level of energy is enough to power 82,000 homes in LA and eliminates 187,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions, the equivalent of taking approximately 40,000 cars off the road. Garcetti's office said the solar improvements bring Los Angeles closer to meeting several goals outlined in the mayor's Sustainable City Plan. LA Sanitation has received a $3.5 million grant from the California Public Utilities Commission for a renewable energy project at the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant. Officials said this grant will help the city harness the power of renewable energy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions at the city's largest water treatment facility. The Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant generates electricity and steam for wastewater treatment and water reclamation processes. The Parkland school shootings have led many high school students to stand up and be leaders for change across the country. Now, Mitch Englander's Leadership Summit, with its theme "Seen and Heard," is creating new avenues for youth leadership here in LA. Anna Marcos brings us more from the event in Griffith Park. Anna.
Yana, recent news events about gun violence around the nation have shown us that high school students can lead the nation when it comes to making changes in gun laws and our conversations about gun violence. And this Leadership Summit by Councilmember Mitch Englander teaches our own LA youngsters that they can help shape the future.
Luke Hoyer would never, Markeen Duque Agüano would never, Peter Wang would never, Alyssa Alhaduff would never, Jamie Guttenberg would never, Meadow Pollock would never.
A lot of the things that have been going on, we want to be a part of the change. And it's hard to get to know how we can do that.
It's been kids who started the nationwide "Never Again" and anti-gun violence movement, and many LA students helped plan local events and protests in the wake of the Parkland school shooting that left 17 people dead.
The March 14th event as a whole was against gun violence in the nation and ensuring students were safe in and on school campuses.
And you helped lead that?
I did. I was one of the five students who helped plan the entire event. And it was dear to my heart because I don't think students should go to school in fear of their lives being taken away from them.
Now, Councilmember Mitch Englander has put on this Leadership Summit to make sure the students continue to develop their leadership skills and become a voice for change.
You guys are what changed and have been the change agents for what's happening. You aren't our future leaders. You are our leaders today. It's not tomorrow. It's not once you get out of college. It's not once you have careers and families that you begin to have a voice. You have a voice, and you are seen and heard.
The students are getting a chance to talk about many issues that concern them, as well as ways to put their ideas into action.
I really want to make a change in how we treat the environment and climate change as well. Also, I really want to make a difference in how Muslim people are portrayed in our society as well, so like Muslim girls in general, because oftentimes we are discriminated against.
There's a lot of poverty in the world, and there's a lot of poverty here, too. And it's a very global issue, and it could be solved.
And if it was students who could do all this across the nation...
We've already seen the most powerful lobby, and one of the oldest lobbies, the gun lobby, fighting our youth.
There's no telling what other changes are next for these rising young leaders. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Councilmember Mitchell Englander reminded the young people that students helped end school segregation in Arkansas in the '50s, students who rallied for equal education in the Chicano blowouts of East LA in the '60s, and it was students in 1971 who forced a drop in the voting age from 21 to 18. Well, help beautify our community by helping clean it, take part in Earth Day celebration, and enjoy a free screening of Coco. All this and this week's things to do. The North Valley YMCA is hosting an Earth Day community cleanup at Limekin Canyon Park in partnership with Council District 12. Help beautify our community and the earth by participating in this event. All children in grades K through 12 must be accompanied by a parent or guardian to participate. It all takes place on Saturday, April 21st. The cleanup begins at 9:00 AM. LA Sanitation will hold its third annual citywide Earth Day LA event at Highland Park. There'll be plenty of city vehicles for kids to explore, games to play, prizes to win, seeds to plant, and over 50 exhibitors to visit. Free beverages and snacks are available while supplies last. All exhibits will be related to city services and sustainability. So join the earth-friendly fun in a festival setting. The event takes place on Saturday, April 21st, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Highland Park Recreation Center located at 6150 Piedmont Avenue. Councilmember Gil Sadio invites you and your family to a free screening of the Disney movie Coco. Enjoy a fun evening with the family and spend some quality time together. The screening takes place Friday, April 20th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Ramona Hall Community Center located at 4580 North Figueroa Street. For more info, call 323-550-1538. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at la-cityv.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Hi, I'm Cindy, and I'm in Little Tokyo, and you're watching Channel 35, Your City,
If... Please take a seat. Please take a seat. Today is Tuesday, April 17th. Madam Quirk, I mean, Madam Quirk, Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Did you call a roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harastas, and Wezar, Carretts, Corin, Martinez, Oferell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Buscaino moves. Sadio seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. Bonin seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? We'll be led in our flag salute today by Mr. David Root. All rise.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Rue. Okay, let's, uh, go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue items 24 to April 20th and item 1F to May 15th.
Okay, so without objection.
Further, the Department of Building and Safety requests that the items 1A, 1C, 1E, 1H, and 1J be received and filed as the liens have been paid in full.
Okay, without objection. So ordered, continue.
Items 1 through 11 are items noticed for public hearing.
You have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Then why don't we move to the next section?
Items 12 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held, an Economic Development Committee report has been submitted, posted, and circulated as item 17A. Do you wish to hold item 17 on the desk?
Yes. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve, eyes.
Thank you, continue.
Items 18 through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Then let's continue.
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to recognize, uh, Mr. Sadio, if you're ready at this time. So, Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Dude, are you ready to give me your check or something? Mr. President, are you ready?
Ready when you are, Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, let me, I'm sorry. Mr. President, we have a video. My staff tells me. It's a surprise. I haven't seen it. I'm looking forward to it. Uh, so there's a video that we're prepared to see first.
Okay, then maybe you could straighten out your zeros.
I thought you were gonna save my time.
The video?
I'm fighting for people who aren't traditionally thought of as people who should have a voice in the political process.
Duty today to ensure highway safety. That duty is a continuous duty that we have every single day, and in the post-9/11 period, in doing so to ensure national security. And SB 60 does that. And so I say to you, those who are here with trepidation, unwillingness to come forward to join the national political consensus on national security, I say to you simply that security delayed is security denied, that safety delayed is safety denied. You come here today and say, "Well, it's too early, it's too soon, we can't, we can't move." But if not now, then when? If not us, then who?
Una paz grande hoy este día, muy feliz, muy contento.
No longer are undocumented people in the shadows. They are alive and well and respected in the state of California.
Mr. President? Mr. President, let me, um, tell you how embarrassed I am, uh, humbled, but also privileged to be here with you and my colleagues this morning. Um, this has been a very long saga, this AB 60. For over 20 years, it was the top priority of my political life and played a very important role in my personal life. And so I'm really humbled to be here with you. Uh, I, as all of us, believe it's a privilege to serve, and I'm fortunate and blessed to, to serve a very humbled community. Uh, I made a choice, and you were with me when we began this struggle over 20 years ago, to do what was right and not what was popular. And it was a difficult decision, but it was one that was driven by a promise to my wife, Ruby, and a product of her incredible love for me, unconditional and endless. I committed to her that I would get this done, and it's been done. There are lessons to be learned from this. We are in a period, excuse me, of incredible anti-immigrant hysteria. We are lacking in leadership from the White House, but it is abundant here in this house. There are lessons to be learned for those of us who want to finish and make sure that DACA becomes the law, that immigration reform becomes a reality, and this remains a place of immigrants both today and for our future. And those lessons are that we must be diligent, that we must remain committed, that we must continue to look forward, and that we must be united as a community. I think we heard much the same from our mayor yesterday. And so today I'm prepared for us to celebrate AB 60, 1 million licenses, to move from One Bill Gill to One Mill Gill, as my staff has now coined this, and to celebrate for all the parents who had to get up early so many times when they could not take their cars and take the first bus, for those parents who had to come home so late without their cars, on bicycles or walking or on the late bus, and for those many children who were denied an opportunity to take an AP class, uh, to go to soccer, to go to cheerleading, or to do the simple things that many young people take as a rite of passage. They were denied those because their parents knew that if they took the vehicle, their family would be in peril, that they could be stopped, that the vehicle would be taken, and that in some instances, they would be deported. Those days, those days where driving without a license could mean deportation are behind us now, and we're thankful. But those days came and are behind us because we were united as a community, we were patient, we were disciplined, we were willing to compromise, and we were willing to vote. Elections matter. Election results matter. You know this, Mr. President. And for those reasons, we're here today to celebrate 1 million licenses and all of California is better for that. Our streets are safer and more secure. And for that, I thank you for your leadership, Mr. President, and your friendship during this difficult struggle, but one that is victorious for all of us. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just give him a round of applause and, uh, for a lot of hard work. And it was, Mr. Sadio, an honor to be at your side, you know, throughout most of that process. I do have Mr. Harris Dawson on the queue. I'd like to say a few words. I'd like to recognize-
We're gonna do the speakers before we do the other speakers?
Okay, go right ahead. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, and members. I just wanted to rise today and, uh, personally, uh, let you know, Councilmember Sadio, what a pleasure it is, uh, to serve with you.
Thank you.
Uh, this bill and so many other things that you have done, staring injustice right in the face, walking towards it, uh, and engaging it and struggling over it and winning, uh, is one of the things that I think makes you a civil rights giant, uh, for the state of California. And so to be able to sit next to you here on the dais from day to day and hear you time and time again, stand up against popular opinion, stand up against the media, stand up against the forces that be for the cause of justice for all people, uh, and helping to create the kind of environment that we can all thrive and progress in is, is truly an honor. So again, thank you from the bottom of my heart. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate you, Gil, on, uh, good public policy. We know it's good public policy for the state of California. It just makes sense. So no matter what people's views are of immigrants, or some people may even have hatred towards certain people, at the end of the day, it's good public policy for the state. But it's beyond that because it's a good civic lesson for all of us. You stood with this. Storms, uh, sometimes you never thought it was gonna get done, but you kept at it, you kept at it. And even now, with all the hysteria about immigrants in this country, you were there defending our immigrant brothers and sisters, and for that, you deserve some recognition. Congratulations, Gil, to you on a great public policy, but more importantly, on showing us what's possible when we keep our eyes on the prize and keep moving forward. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I also want to rise to commend and congratulate you for this. Uh, Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Weezer, and now I stand. And I think that's a reflection of the city of Los Angeles, uh, is that there are people all around this city who knew that this was the right thing to do. And I saw, as a young staffer, working for different council people, congresspeople, your fight in Sacramento for this for generations. When you were fighting for this in Sacramento, my significant other at the time was undocumented from Oaxaca.
Wow.
And I saw every single day the impact the lack of a license had on him, his ability to earn a livelihood, the fear he faced every single day, living in the shadows, that, that, everything can come crumbling down in a heartbeat. And I was a fan of yours and an admirer of yours for your work on this long before I ever met you. And I love the signs that the people next to you were holding, because for so long, people mocked you and derided you as One Bill Gill. And I love One Mill Gill. Congratulations.
Thank you.
One Mill Gill, I like it too. Freddie must have thought of that. Anyway, Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I have to admit, it did irk me when they called you One Bill Gill, um, because you had an illustrious career, you did a lot of other legislation very successfully. But this is your best bill, and it's something that you never gave up on, and you fought hard on, and you were visible, and you've made just an amazing difference, and shown that if you don't give up and you just keep plugging away, almost anything, no matter how impossible it seems, can be done. And, uh, I think it gives us hope as we deal with what we're staring in the face at the federal level, um, that we just keep plugging away, we just keep resisting, we just keep pushing back, and we can be victorious here too. So thank you for your amazing work and your accomplishments on this issue and many, many others.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, we have, uh, a couple of speakers here. You know them all. We've worked with them all. Uh, I want to introduce Nativo Lopez. But before I bring him up, people should know, uh, that Nativo Lopez is a good friend of mine. And the measure of, uh, our friendship is the fact that he brought this idea to me when I was campaigning for, uh, office. I told him if he wants to remain my friend, that he should, uh, keep his ideas to himself. I didn't realize that this was gonna be an over 20-year journey and the changes that would take place. Uh, but it is true that, uh, he and Bert Corona, the most consummate champion of immigrants in the history of this nation, uh, came forward with this idea that immigrants should be able to drive legally in the state, as they had been for 60 years, and that it was a threat to public safety and to their safety if they were not allowed to. With that, let me bring up Nativo Lopez, uh, the president of Ermenda Mexicana.
Good morning, President Wesson. I want to thank you personally for standing with One Mill Gill in this long fight, brother Councilman Corretts, Price, other members in the legislature that were present in this long fight and always stood with our brother Gil Sadio. It is said that victory has a thousand fathers and defeat has none. Today I can say unabashedly that we have one father to crown and recognize for this victory of AB 60 and the issuance of 1 million driver's licenses in California to undocumented immigrants. That is City Councilman Senator Gil Sadio. It goes without saying that this is the people's victory, and there are too many organizations and individuals who contributed to the struggle to bring this about to mention here today. We all know, however, that a legislator is only as successful as he or her ability to tell the story and gather forces inside and outside the legislature in support of legislation. I'm honored to have added my grain of sand to this fight and been a steadfast ally during all the twists and turns and multiple battles with Gil Sadio. All power to the people. Thank you.
Next, a champion who fought tirelessly to make sure that immigrant motorists did not have their vehicles, uh, taken from them, who fought for the driver's license until its victory, Adrian Alvarez from the Southern California Immigration Coalition.
Good morning, Mr. President. Um, I want to say that it would be such a great thing if the LA City Council was not a one-champion city council, but that we have the whole city council be like Gil Sadio. And be like Gil Sadio in this sense, in joining the people, the community, people like the street vendors right behind us, the very same people that benefit from the tremendous and long, hard work that Gil Sadio did, shoulder to shoulder with people like Nativo and Angelica Salas and countless people that believe that everybody should have the right to live as human beings and not in fear as second-class citizens. I'm here to applaud Gil Sadio. I'm here to say, "Viva Gil Sadio," and I'm here to say to everybody that has this tremendous power and responsibility to impact millions of people, be like Gil Sadio and stand with the immigrant community in defending the right, not just to drive, but to live legally and freely, to be able to sell with dignity, to be able to send their kids to school and to college through their hard work. So please understand that we're here to celebrate a victory of the people, but we're also here to encourage everyone to follow the example of Gil Sadio so we can accomplish much more for our immigrant communities. Thank you very much, y que viva Gil Sadio.
Let me, uh, introduce
Let me introduce the executive director and a champion known here in California and well-known in Washington, D.C. She works tirelessly and has dedicated her entire life and her career to advancing the plight of immigrants here in California. She is Angelica Salas, the executive director of CHIRLA.
Thank you so much, Council President, and also all our members of City Council. I want to say certainly thank you to our champion, Gil Sadio, because we have a million people who are driving safely on the road. They've been tested, they have insurance, they're able to take their children to school, take them to the hospital when they need care, they're able to go to their jobs, they're able to pursue a better life. I also want to thank this council because when it was hard, we came to you. We came to the City Council of Los Angeles and we asked you to vote in favor of resolution supporting AB 60. Our police department also stood with us in favor of AB 60, the driver's license, and they're here too, and we want to say thank you because that mattered so much. Today, you have other challenges before you. And while we're talking about AB 60 and really celebrating what the benefit of this is, you also have before you a challenge. So I'm going to take a little bit of a privilege to say, today you're going to be voting on sidewalk vending and making it legal in the city. And my hope is that you stand with our sidewalk vendors the way you stood with immigrants when they wanted their driver's license and that our police department, and you stand with them too. Thank you very much.
Finally, let me introduce a very dear friend of mine, a former classmate and a man that I worked with for many years at Local 660 SEIU, where we had the opportunity to learn the incredible organizing skills that this man has. He is an incredible leader, both here nationally and internationally. Kent Wong is the director of the UCLA Labor Center. Let me introduce my dear friend, Kent Wong.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, we are honored today to celebrate this victory, not only for 1 million immigrants and their families whose lives have been improved under AB 60, but this is a victory for solid public policy, this is a victory for public safety, and this is a message that the people of Los Angeles and California are sending of hope, of community, and inclusion at a time when the forces of hatred, fear, and division are governing the White House today. So congratulations to the city of Los Angeles, to the state of California, and to my good friend Gilbert Sadio.
Okay, photo, everybody? I thank you. I'm very humbled, and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
All right. You know, let's give one more round of applause, okay? Now, with that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, colleagues, I stand here today with John Zabo and Janay Brown from the Public Library, L.A. City Public Library, and dozens and dozens of volunteers who enrich our neighborhoods every day with what they do in all of our public libraries across the city of Los Angeles, and they deserve a big round of applause. As we all know, knowledge is power. Stoking the imagination fortifies the spirit. And where can you gain both of those principles in our public libraries? Like many of you, my home away from home growing up was my local public library or my school library. And from that experience as a very young man, I learned about the world of possibilities beyond my own neighborhood. And that's what our libraries can do for young and old and everyone in between to this day. Los Angeles is so fortunate to have one of the nation's greatest library systems with a central library and 72 branches throughout Los Angeles. Our public library system is great for many reasons. Its innovative programs and services, the great leadership of our library commissioners and city librarian, John Zabo, the staff of professionals, and the passionate support of Angelenos, especially those who dedicate time and energy as volunteers at our libraries. In fact, there are more than 6,166 people who volunteer at our city libraries. In 2016, volunteers generously provided more than 168,268 hours of service. And we can monetize that volunteerism at nearly $4,788,913, to be exact. So that's what our volunteer corps provides for the benefit of Angelenos across this city, providing assistance to many library programs and service in a variety of roles. They include adult literacy, our Friends of the Libraries, Central Library Docents, homework assistants, STAR Program, which is storytelling and reading, adult book discussion leaders, Path to Citizenship, Money and Health Matters, financial literacy, children and teen summer reading clubs, library program aides, collection inventory aides, media technicians, special project aides, and teen volunteers. Imagine if more people spent time engaged in our library system than watching television, for example. Volunteers greatly enhance the programs and services offered by the library, enrich the lives of people throughout the city. I would now like to welcome our library champion and our city librarian, John Zabo, to say a few words. John.
Good morning. Thank you so much. As you all know, Angelenos absolutely love their libraries, and a tremendous example of that is the thousands of Angelenos who give of their time and energy in our libraries and volunteer each year, thousands of them. And so thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell, Council President Wesson, and the entire City Council for acknowledging, recognizing, and really celebrating the dedication, hard work, and generosity of our thousands of volunteers. Our volunteers are from all parts of the city, all neighborhoods, all ages, and we're very, very proud of that. They are committed to the communities they serve, and they see firsthand in our libraries the valuable role that the library plays in building strong neighborhoods and helping people succeed. They are helping people take the first step on the path to citizenship in our New American Centers. They are helping the youngest Angelenos develop a lifelong love of reading through all of our early childhood literacy programs. They're supporting the library through friends groups all across this city, helping to raise funds and support our branch libraries and advocating for them. And we offer over 18,000 programs a year in our libraries, and they are helping our amazing library staff conduct those programs and run them. And of course, essential to a strong, big volunteer program, over 6,000 volunteers is a strong, amazing staff. And the Los Angeles Public Library has incredibly talented, dedicated, passionate librarians who, on a daily basis, say thank you, recruit volunteers, train volunteers, and make them a part of this institution that we're all proud of, the Los Angeles Public Library. And so I really want to recognize our staff as well. Janay Brown, principal librarian, who leads this work at the L.A. Public Library, and Karcee Bowles, who is our volunteer coordinator, and so many others throughout the 72 branches in the central library of the L.A. Public Library. And to demonstrate just how valuable our volunteers are to the library, we want to present this ceremonial check for over $4.7 million. Of course, the contributions of our volunteers are priceless, but we like to put a dollar value on it just to show the impact. And if Controller Galpern is listening, it is written on the bank of good deeds, so we won't be cashing the check. Anyway, but thank you all so much, and a hearty thank you, a genuine thank you on behalf of all of us at the L.A. Public Library, to all of the great Angelenos who volunteer in our libraries. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, John.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you so much. Yeah, there we go. So, John, don't go anywhere. This may not be worth $4,800,000, but it is a certificate of appreciation, celebrating our core of volunteers. And I always say that Los Angeles has so much going for it, but the only reason we have so much going for it is the power and passion of our people. And it's the power and passion and altruism of the city's volunteers that make this city live and thrive. So thank you so much for all the work you do during the year, and we congratulate you and wish you many more successes in the year to come. Thank you.
Mr. Kokorian, as they are exiting, you may want to go to the center aisle for your presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, long before this city had set a Vision Zero goal, long before most people were talking about distracted driving, in fact, long before probably most of our members even had driver's licenses, Detective Bill Bustos was saving the lives of people of Los Angeles as a traffic detective, Traffic Division spokesperson, and an advocate for traffic safety. In his 31-year career, Detective Bustos has received more than 153 commendations for his professionalism, teamwork, investigative skills, compassion, observational skills, tactics, attention to duty, and absolutely stellar duty. In 1986, he joined Hollenbeck Division as a probationary officer that year, and he has been serving this city with passion and with commitment and with dedication ever since. For the past 17 years, Detective Bustos was the officer in charge for the Valley Traffic Division Detective Section, overseeing a unit of up to 25 employees, and his coordinated work helped the Valley Traffic Detectives arrest hundreds of individuals for traffic crimes. He's responded to hundreds, maybe over 1,000, traffic deaths in his career, and in doing that, he's created a safer environment for residents throughout the San Fernando Valley area and indeed the entire city of Los Angeles. Detective Bustos has also distinguished himself as a stellar media presence. We've all seen him in television shows, on public service announcements, on the news, always talking about ways to keep people safer on our streets. Councilmember Martinez and I were just reminiscing about many Halloween press conferences where we talked about Halloween safety with kids trick-or-treating in front of schools, New Year's Eve, Grad Night, the start of school in August. All of those were occasions that Bill Bustos found an opportunity to remind people to slow down, pay attention to the road, obey our traffic laws, and by doing that, save lives. And he's done that on television, he's done that time and again in the media, and really, for all the horror that he's seen in his career, for all the fatalities that he's seen in his career, there are probably hundreds of people whose lives have been positively touched and perhaps saved for every one that he's seen that's been lost because of the work of Bill Bustos. And it's been my office's great pleasure to work closely with him since the first day I arrived in council, not only on public safety announcements like I've described it, on child seat installation events, in distracted driving events, and in so many other things. It's been a real pleasure to work with this consummate professional in saving lives. And I'm sorry to have to say that Bill Bustos retired at the end of February after those 31 years, and he will be very, very difficult to replace, but I just wanted to thank him for his incredible three decades of service and for all the lives that he's saved. And it's an honor and a pleasure for me, in doing so, to be able to share the podium with the chair of our Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Mitchell Englander.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Paul. I can't believe this day is actually here. 1986. 1986 was both incredibly rewarding for Bill Bustos and also one of probably the most frightening days of his life, when he pinned on a badge and realized that the same day he was graduating from the police academy, Mitchell Englander was actually getting his driver's license on that day. It's been an incredible ride for all of us, watching you, knowing you, what you've done. Bill Bustos, in fact, as not just an LAPD officer, not just as the officer in charge of Valley Traffic, but the Valley Traffic Division is one of the biggest divisions by far, not only in the Los Angeles Police Department, but in the country. Because of that, Bill has actually seen more carnage than most officers any These are things you don't recover from or get immune to. These are things you deal with, and what he's done with that, from witnessing it firsthand, from training new officers on how to report it, on how to enforce it, but what he's done is he's turned around the entire narrative and conversation on protection, and not just enforcement, but education and prevention, and working with so many schools and teams and leaders. This is a guy who doesn't just put on a badge and get behind a black and white to respond during and while he's on the clock. Bill has been one that every day, day in and day out, preaches to everyone about safety, and it comes from a place that you and I will never understand. I've actually been there on scene with him. In fact, it wasn't that long ago, on an incident in my district, that a teenager was driving at high rates of speed on Rinaldi and rear-ended a parked semi-truck, decapitated, on scene. And the family showed up. The family showed up. And the first thing Bill did was not to take the officers that were working the perimeter and control the family, the first thing he did was run over to them and console them. And then he went home to his own family, his wife of twenty-nine years, his daughter, his son. Bill has over a hundred and fifty awards, including the Dan Danko Lifetime Achievement Award, that I was honored to bestow to him. For those of you that don't know, and I was going to share you, that was one incident, but there have been so many, that he's not just hanging it up, he's actually going to become, and already has become, a reserve Los Angeles police officer. This is a guy who hasn't only just dedicated his life to public safety and public service, he knew in junior high school, when he was running track and one of his coaches was an LAPD officer, in junior high school, in junior high school, that he was going to be a police officer. So what took so long after he graduated high school? Well, that's because he went on to college, and then if that weren't enough, he went on to serve this country. And then when he came back, he followed through on that commitment and became a Los Angeles police officer. He's got a pretty remarkable family, too, and I just want to point them out. His wife, Adriana, who's always been there, twenty-nine years now, twenty-nine years they've been together, is a true inspiration. She's been the one waiting. She's been the one, late at night, waiting. Many birthdays and anniversaries missed because he was working in holidays. She's paid a sacrifice as well, and now she'll have him full-time. But then his daughter, Christina, and his son Danielle. Christina, many of you would never guess, an international star. In fact, she won first place in a talent show with Ecuador's Got Talent, just like America's Got Talent. Now, the interesting thing is, she went that route because her mom and dad are from Ecuador. So you can imagine how proud they must be in the entire family, and I don't know if she's going to sing a little tune today and put her on the spot. But also his son Daniel, both of them, by the way, matadors from CSUN, and Daniel is well on his way to becoming one of the top accountants here in Los Angeles, and I know his parents are so proud, but he's had incredible parents, and so has she, that we thank you so much for what you've done for us, for what you've done to the city, for what you've done for so many. God bless you, we wish you the best. You are truly a hero amongst the City of Angels. Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce our chief, Mike Moore.
Actually, good morning, members. I'm here on behalf of Chief Charlie Beck and the men and women of Los Angeles Police Department to congratulate a man and also to be sure that he comes back as a reserve. Bill Bustos and I met each other back in the early two thousand as a commander when I was in the Valley, and then later as a deputy chief out there for five-plus years, and he was the consummate professional in traffic enforcement. The numbers and calculations, well over a thousand fatalities, thousands of other accidents and deaths, serious injuries. We've gone through, in the last decade and a half, with Bill Bustos' leadership in the Valley Traffic Investigative Section, the changing of, with AB sixty and the passing of that, the reform of our impound policies. His interests were not just the pursuit of justice for victims, and while he championed that, and he was a great energy behind it, he's also been one of our enlightened leaders that has known the value of education, the value of legislative reform, so that the traveling public can be educated, can be well-trained, and can be licensed, and can operate our streets safely. When we look at Valley Traffic, it stands head and shoulders, I will say, as the chief of operations, over our other three traffic divisions for the leadership that Detective Bustos has shown. He has demonstrated the awareness of not just the enforcement posture, but understanding the importance of education, understanding the importance of working with our Department of Transportation engineers, understanding the meaning of what it really means to provide for the safety of all motoring and pedestrian and bicyclists that are in our Valley. So we're going to miss him in that role. It is a position that someone will follow, though not replace. But we're also, I'm encouraged that he's staying with us, because not just has he been a leader in law enforcement for LAPD in traffic, he has been an ambassador for law enforcement in our country. As he's traveled to Ecuador, as he's gone and exchanged ideas and information and insight with other Latin American countries, he has become a tremendous voice of what it means to be an American police professional. So I look forward to him continuing that. He's got a face for television, too, and he's a tremendous representative of us. He will be missed, and I do want to share, as the councilman indicated, with the family, our thanks and appreciation. The death and destruction that he's seen, the energies that he's continually applied, the passion, as Councilman O'Farrell talked about, the passion that we see in other parts of city government, our city volunteers, city employees, Bill has brought in that, but yet we know that the success of that is having a family at home that's there reinforcing the value that he brings, the differences that he makes. So, thank you, God bless you, for everything you've done in supporting and making him so successful with us, and I richly deserve retirement. Congratulations, God bless.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bustos. It's been such a pleasure to work with you. I was recalling with Mr. Kocorian the times that we've spent time together doing press conferences to ensure the safety of our kids when they're out trick-or-treating during Halloween, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Congratulations, and I wish you well.
Thank you, Madam President, and it's a pleasure to congratulate and to welcome to our podium Detective Bill Bustos.
Thank you. Good morning. Councilman Kocorian, Councilman Englander, Chiefs, police officers, honorable council members, thank you for this recognition. I'd like to formally introduce my lovely wife, the one who has been behind me in the balance of my professional and personal life, my wife Adriana. She's actually the one who deserves the recognition and the awards. My daughter Christina, my son Daniel, and my sister Jackie is here as well, and also some members of my extended LAPD family from Valley Traffic Division. It is indeed an honor, I'm humbled for this recognition, but it's not just for me, it's for my family, it's for the people I've worked with at the Los Angeles Police Department, Valley Traffic Division, in accepting this recognition. You know, as was mentioned before, I am from the country of Ecuador. This is a city that I love very much because it embraced me at the age of eight years of age when I was adopted by this city. This city is the one that saw me grow, educated me through LAUSD. This is a city where I met my lovely wife, where we were married, where our kids were born, where I had the opportunity to join the best police department in the world, the Los Angeles Police Department. This is a city where I was able to work with the most talented, the most dedicated, the most compassionate and courageous people in the Los Angeles Police Department. As was mentioned by Councilman Kocorian and Councilman Englander, unfortunately, we have traffic collisions everywhere, and in the two hundred and twenty-five square miles in the San Fernando Valley portion of the city of Los Angeles, people make mistakes when they're driving, when they're walking, when they're cycling, when they're commuting, and unfortunately, those mistakes turn into traffic collisions where unfortunately people become seriously injured or even die. And that's when our people here, my extended family from the Los Angeles Police Department, Valley Traffic Division, especially the detective section, will respond to make a difference with the surviving family members, and provide the support and do the investigations the best that we can. And so, you know, I am leaving after thirty-one and a half years. I never thought I was going to be able to say that, but the time has come and has gone by very quickly. But my adult life has been about service. I had the pleasure and honor of serving in the United States Army, the best army in the entire world. I had the also privilege of serving our great state of California in the California National Guard, and again, here with the Los Angeles Police Department, the best department in the world. I need a little break, yes, from the police department, but I will come back and reengage in a different position to continue to serve the community, because there is a lot of work to be done. So, thank you for the recognition on behalf of my family, on behalf of the LAPD family. Thank you very much for your support, because I've been here on many occasions asking for a reward for Councilman Kocorian, Councilman Englander, Councilmember Martinez, and some past council members who have been here before, and you've always supported us in approving those reward motions so that we can continue our investigations, and also supporting the surviving family members of our victims. So, thank you very much for the recognition, and hopefully, I'll be able to serve our community in the near future along with you. Thank you very much.
So, on behalf of the entire city council and the entire city of Los Angeles, Detective Bustos, we want to express our thanks, our gratitude, and our best wishes for a really well-deserved retirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian, we have one more member. Mr. Bonning?
Oh, sorry, that was an accident.
That was a mistake? Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
That's it, thank you. Next presentation, Mr. Blumenfield?
Folks, please don't forget any of your property. We'll be anxious to refer back to you. April as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. Yes, it's exciting. I'm here with Judy Mark from the Autism Society, Connie Lepin, who's been an activist on autism for fifty years. We've worked together on these issues when I was in legislature and here in the council for many, many years. So, I want to recognize also the Department of Disability for co-sponsoring this event. It's important when we say both autism awareness and acceptance, because it's not enough to just be aware. We accept people with autism for who they are and provide accommodations within our city and within our communities. The CDC has reported that one out of sixty-eight people are currently diagnosed somewhere on the autism spectrum. This means that the city of Los Angeles has approximately sixty thousand individuals with some form of autism. That's sixty thousand children and adults who we should have been including and embracing and celebrating every day, not just in April. A new generation of young people impacted by autism are growing up in Los Angeles, graduating from high school, going to college, and striving to become productive members of the community. People impacted with autism, regardless of age, are striving to attain economic independence through self-sufficiency and gainful employment. All individuals impacted by autism deserve a life of inclusion, self-determination, and the opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life. I've been, as mentioned, I was a longtime supporter of the autism community from back in the days when we were fighting to keep the worst of the budget cuts away from the clients, from co-authoring the Self-Determination Bill, which these guys here were real just fighters on, that helped change the narrative around autism. It was a law to provide choice for individuals being served by regional centers, to fighting for developmental disabilities throughout the city. Now, I'm proud that in Los Angeles, we have many thriving organizations, such as the Autism Society of Los Angeles, that work hand in glove with service providers, nonprofit organizations, regional centers, school districts, to help people with autism and developmental disabilities get jobs and become independent. It's time to move beyond awareness of autism, to embrace the atmosphere of acceptance and inclusion in our schools, communities, and resulting in a true appreciation of the unique aspects of contributions of all people. I hope you can join me and the Autism Society of Los Angeles to further celebrate Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month on Friday of this week. We're going to have a ceremony from ten AM to twelve PM in the Bradley Tower, where we'll hear from some individuals with autism and the incredible things that are doing in our community. So we're going to hear a lot of good things on Friday, but as a little taste of that, I'm going to, we're going to hear a few words from Judy, and then from Connie, and then I'll give you the proclamation. So Judy.
I just, thank you so much, Bob, and thank you, city council members. I just also want to put a shout-out to the LAPD. The Autism Society of Los Angeles has been working for almost a decade with the Los Angeles Police Department, and we've trained over five thousand police officers in LAPD on how to interact with people with autism in the community, and we feel that it's made a real difference in our community. And now I want to introduce Connie Lepin.
I'm extraordinarily honored that our organization is also to get this proclamation. My son's fifty years old and met Tom Bradley, and when we wanted to introduce the world to what autism was, and look where we are today, we're getting a proclamation, and we so appreciate it from the bottom of our heart. And I want to say you have always been our champion, and I feel always safe when I'm around you, and I want to thank the council. This means so much to all of us, and especially people that have the challenge of autism.
And I just want to introduce, we are very honored to have two self-advocates with us today. We have David Oster, and we have Matt Polly, as well as a couple of parents, in addition to Connie and me. We have Harvey Lepin, we have Tamara Polly, and we have Betty Grimble, who are all parents. We are all volunteers, and we are thrilled to be here. Thank you so much.
All right, so let's hear it, and please accept this Autism in L.A. Day. That is today, Autism in L.A. Day. Please accept this certificate.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. We'll take a photo.
Mr. Blumenfield, we have Mr. Coetz on the cue.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Bob, for bringing this forward. I don't have anyone in my immediate family that's affected by autism, but oddly, I have such a high percentage of friends who have at least one or more children who are affected by autism. by autism. It seems like it's one in two rather than one in 60. The, the effects are so pervasive and the dealing with it is so difficult, but there are so many amazing programs that have been created within the last five, 10, 20 years that it actually gives autistic folks a fighting chance to have a very normal life. And that's because of the great work that all of you do. So, I just want to thank all of you and your organizations and everybody that helps the people with autism live a better and better life as time goes on. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Thank you, Mr. Bonin. We're done. Thank you. Okay. Members, we're going to move on to multiple cards. Herman, are you here? Armando Herman, you can come up, go ahead and speak on items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1G, 1H, 1I, 1J, items number 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, item number 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31, and your general public comment.
And Madam President, as the speaker makes his way forward, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to continue items 1D and 1I for 30 days to May 15th.
Without objection, that will be the order. Go ahead and start, start Mr. Herman's time.
Hold on, tell me to step back. So, you heard on the motion today that the motion brought to our attention regarding how well we're doing with identifying the apprehension of those involved in hidden runs. What a great presentation that we lose a fine officer who could control and stop all these unwanted incidents of hidden runs. As you know, the state of California, especially in Los Angeles, has become the hidden world capital of today. How do I know that? We give out the most liquor license, the most bar license, like Jose Weisar's bar, and we give them out simply for what? The benefit of what? It's called getting loaded, getting high, and getting behind the wheel to drive. And that's the reason why Keener Tyrone Brown is dead, along with Judge Ferguson's son, who died, and we never found out why. It concludes to my investigation that somewhere in the city of Los Angeles, the TMU under the TRO threatened Mr. Ferguson's son and killed him, hypothetically, but politically correct. So, that's one issue for $50,000. That's what your life is valued for, $50,000. And what about motion 27, Jose Weisar, relative funding for resurfacing of Mission Road? While our infrastructure is a failed catastrophic fucked-up failure by our city to provide us with infrastructure. That's why we have all these incidents, a slip and falls, and these major lawsuits brought by Wayne Spindler and myself against the city of Los Angeles and Mr. Dawson for not providing us with a safe surface to accommodate us under the ADA standard of the 2010. And by the way, Mr. Dawson, has anyone ever told you, "You look like Mr. Carson, Ben Carson"? You ugly motherfucker. And the last comment on 26 in my 30 seconds is Bonin amending citywide list of special events. The only special event are all these fucking presentations that go on for an hour and 45 minutes, wasting the public's time, who want to talk about the issues of street vending and how to make street sidewalks safe. I want to go into my general public comment. In addition to all that we sacrifice our lives as Americans, I want to bring to your attention that we, the American people, deny this horseshoe of moron politicians to stop, stop providing alcohol necessity to the welfare of American people. Because you obviously can't control the problems of drinking and driving like Jose Weisar had a history of doing so. Am I right or wrong? Absolutely right.
Stick to the items, Mr. Herman.
In addition to that, I exercise on a daily basis so that I can come here and tolerate criticism. But as you see, my flabby arms are only for one reason, and that's so I can fly out of City Hall every time I conduct my business. So, get your ass to work and fix the problems here in the city, HHH. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, are you here? Mr. Walsh, you've filled out cards for items number 1A, 1B, 1C, 1E, 1G, 1H, 1J, items number 2, 3, 4, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31, and your general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. It's always nice to be treated with respect over here. It always happens over at the county, but over here, we're treated like crap. Not you, present company excepted. Okay, HollywoodHighlands.org, and number 20 is, these are hearing maintenance for lighting districts. You're doing a pretty good job on lighting. The lights get repaired a day or so later. People, the gangs that, remember, maybe the gangs we mentioned, the names of the gangs now that there's a new owner at the Times. We have a new owner there. And remember, everything is turning Asian, and they're leaving downtown LA for El Segundo. Now, establishing a hearing date for these update temporary emergency homeless shelters. The homeless shelters will end up with people living in front of the homeless shelter. There's no way to solve this problem except an equal, erasing unequal distribution of wealth. And you know what that's called? It's called communism. And you go to, you go to China, you, these other countries, these communist countries, nobody's sleeping on the street in China. Anybody see some people, people sleeping on the street? That's because they have equal distribution of wealth. But you can spend millions and millions of dollars, and you will, millions of dollars, on homeless shelter programs that will go nowhere. When I moved, when I came here in 1966, 66, there were, you could, you could shoot a cannon off and Westwood Boulevard all night on Friday night and not injure anybody. Number 24, this is funding the annual gun buyback and sunlight nightlights. You buy back the guns and then use them and then return them and get more money for them. This is, it isn't going to work. What we want is a declaration, number 25, of homeless shelter crisis. We've been in a homeless shelter crisis for years.
Mr. Walsh, you have your one minute for general public comment, sir.
Okay. The mayor got his ass to Iowa. City slicker goes to Iowa, and this is what they said in Iowa. This guy seems to me to be a fagula. I don't think he belongs in this state. And of course, he is, and there's nothing wrong with sucking cock, except he pretends he doesn't suck cock. And all of these reporters here jerk off, and they let, and the gay ones watch the mayor wag his little ass, and when they say wag his little ass, they don't do anything. I'm telling you right now, there's, are we going to be overrun, white people? Yes, we goddamn well will be, but not by Mexicans, by Asians. They've already bought the Times, and they're moving the Times out of the city of Los Angeles. And who this guy is, I don't know, but I'm telling you right now, this newspaper is bullshit.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker is Daniela Storm. Is there anybody here by that name? Daniela Storm? That person's not in the audience. Patricia McAllister, are you here?
And Madam President, as the speaker makes her way forward, a special motion one has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McAllister. I'm going to remind you of the items you've filled out cards for, items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1E, 1G, 1H, 1J, item 23 and 25, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, let's start with item one. I see where you have some liens, almost $4,000, where those liens have been closed. So, so monitor this program very carefully, please. It's on the web where it has been closed. Item number 23, you want to update the standards on temporary emergency homeless shelters. We don't need any more shelters. They keep the people in the shelters for 30 days, 60 days, and they're back on the street. We need you to spend that HHH money, that 1.2 billion. Now, I've been around to eight, eight developments, and nobody's doing anything except O'Farrell. He's the only one that's building. I went to yours, Martine, Martinez, you're not doing anything. I went to your development. This weekend, I went to Kekorian's. He's got people living in houses, talking about, he getting ready to tear down the houses. He's not doing a darn thing. I don't know what you all are doing with this money. Harris Dawson's not doing anything. I've been to his development. Who's are you? You've got Skid Row. 20,000 black people, no Mexicans, no illegal aliens. You're the ones who've been funneling these black people to Skid Row. We're going to get you out of here.
No, Ms. McAllister, you need to speak to the items.
Who's are not doing anything. Went to two of his developments this weekend. Price was supposed to start building in 2016. He hasn't built a darn thing. I've gone over there, talked to the people and everything. Harris Dawson hasn't done a thing. You guys think you're going to get away with this 1.2 billion, you're a liar. You're going to build this housing, and you're going to build it now. People are on the street dying, 800 dying a year, and you haven't done a darn thing. You bring your rands up in here every week, go throw me out for talk, for booing. None of you need to be here. If I was the mayor of this city, I'd be sitting right where Ms. Martinez is sitting. He need to be in here. He is the mayor. He was voted to be the mayor, and he letting these illegal aliens run this city. And we want him in here. I'm not really holding you responsible, I'm holding the mayor responsible because he letting you do what you want to do. You're supposed to be building this housing. O'Farrell is the only one building. The rest of you are not doing. Sedilio, you've always been building for illegal aliens, so I have to give you credit. But we're going, Sedilio, he does build. He's been building a long time ago. He got one on Sixth Street.
Ms. McAllister, I need to ask you one more time. You need to get back to the items you filled out cards for.
That is the item. Now, let me get to some more of them. I got a problem here with Kekorian. Like I said, I want him to build. I got that, got one. I got 23, we don't need the shelters. Skid Row, I want my black people off Skid Row. I want them off of Skid Row, okay? I want them off. We shouldn't have 20,000 black people. We built this nation. My great-grandmother was born in slavery. We built this nation. You brought all these illegal aliens in here, and you put black people. God don't like that. All of you are under curse. You're under curse. We are the only, we're the minority of this country. We're not supposed to be replaced by no minority. All you people come up in here and took our jobs, our housing, put my people on the street. All of you cursed. Now, let's go down to this public comment.
No, no, your end general public comment.
My general public comment is to black people, don't you sell one house? Don't you sell one weapon? You hold on to your weapons. Here, three, three East Los Angeles gang members just got charged for bombing black people's homes in Ramona Gardens project. They've been doing this for years, threatening and killing black people, running them out of their communities. Don't you sell one weapon? And now, they're coming for you white folks. They're going to run you out of your communities too. And they think that these illegals are going to take over this city and this state. You're a liar. If I have to go into the military, we're going to get you out of here. President Trump is, they're moving fast. We're going to get that wall up. Any company that you don't give a contract to because they want to work on that wall, hell with you. We don't need your city contracts, okay? I want these companies to work on that wall, get these illegal aliens out of this country. This country belongs to Americans. And if you think you're Bolsheviks, a lot of you are from Bolsheviks. I know you're Jews. If you think you're going to take over this country, you're a liar.
Members of the audience, members of the audience, I'm going to ask you to please restrain yourself from booing or... Ms. McAllister, you're done with your time. The next speaker, excuse me, members of the audience, please be respectful of everyone. We, we were raised differently. Come on. Let's have Mr. Eric Previn. Where's Mr. Previn? Are you here? Followed by Antonio Ramirez. Antonio, are you here? Okay, you're next, after Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you filled out cards for items number 8, 1A, 1G, item 25, 26, 28, and 29, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
Right, that's, that's obviously not, not an accurate...
Oh, by the way, you can also speak on special one because you also fill out a card for that.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Martinez. If you could just simply sit quietly during this, that would be great. Very much appreciate your advocacy over the years. And here, staring justice in the face, it is powerful. It is extremely powerful in a room where so much has happened over the years and so much advocacy has been, you know, acted on and also simply ignored, unfortunately. Item number one today is the lien item. So, here, whereas we are trying today to do something at item 17 that's good for the vendors to make it so that it's not a crime to sell on the streets, we continue this endless supply of leaning on properties of Angelenos, which is violating the basic idea of do no harm. And yet, today, even today, in CD8, there are two that almost top $10,000 in liens on Angelenos, one of whom's name was Manuel, who only speaks Spanish. "E hablo con Manuel, y Manuel diga, por favor, porque no es, no, it makes no sense, porque..." And the gente de Los Angeles Building and Safety, "Diga, come back in 30 días, por un otro hearing." This poor guy, and I asked Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson's staff, and I believe they tried to help him, but this process is, is bruto, is fail. It's inappropriate during a homeless crisis, Councilmember Martinez, and you know that. You know that, deep down. Item number 29, you have the CRLA money going back into self-help graphics. If I had a dollar for every time the self-help graphics machine was pinched and tweaked to get more money, you know, we were reading articles about how when the redevelopment commissions were dissolved, the money that came into the city was not spent for the housing and for the taking care, but in fact poured into the budget for enforcement, various kinds of appalling enforcement against regular Angelenos. And today at item 17, the vendor thing, we have to say thank you. It's hard to say it with a straight face because of the hipocrita in this room, but we should make it so that if we are going to make it legal, that the big remedy is not to come back to City Hall for a horrible hearing where they're fixed and people can never win, and you get sent around in circles over and over again. It's, it's not cool. It's super not cool. And I will also say that you added a little addendum today that when the equipment of a vendor is taken from them, the city has decided that it will be a full-cost recovery. But my question is, what happens if they're innocent or found innocent? Do they still have to pay those pernicious fees to get the equipment out of storage? I certainly hope not. And today at item 23 and 25, obviously, we have some homeless initiatives. Mayor Garcetti made some moving remarks yesterday, described it not as an issue, but as the issue of our time. And it's true. And yet, you know, declaring it an emergency, we appreciate, but what are we going to actually do? I heard that they've put together some parking for people who don't have a spot.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
What was, what was that noise?
General public comment?
Oh, okay. So, I'll just finish that thought in my general public comment and then continue. The, the thought was that they earmarked at the VA on the west side some spaces to try to live, give people a place to sleep at night, but Buscaino's not shuffling them out of their homes and rousting people out of the area. But instead, they provided, and it's very important, 10 parking spaces. But 10? But 10? 10? We have 60,000 people, many of whom are living in their cars, not because they're drug addicts or mental health crises people, but in fact because they are without a place to stay. So I don't know how you can sit there and have a conversation during that, but it's pretty interesting. And in conclusion, I just wanna say something positive. At Coachella nearby, not in our county, but close enough, The Beehive and Beyonce made a show that was incredibly powerful. And it's so rewarding to know that people of color and people from all over the world can be recognized and celebrated on such an important and powerful level. So I would also say congratulations to Kendrick Lamar.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker is Ms. Ramirez. Antonio, I'm gonna remind you about the items, okay? I need you to stay on the items. Items number 23...
I don't need that help. Thank you very much. Tell that to the... all the illegals here.
Everyone here, including yourself. Let me just remind you, items 23, 25, and 28 is what you filled out cards for, and then your general public comment.
I got denied all the others, ma'am.
No, the...
14?
23, 25, and 28.
I did sign up for number 14 and...
No, that was satisfied in committee, so we don't speak on item 14.
God dang. Let's go to number 23. Shelters don't work. They are filthy, unsafe, always rampant theft, 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 and with toxic noise from the toxic illegal Latino wetbacks and gangbangers. They are pigs, pussies, and thieves who steal and vandalize and rob and graffiti everything inside the shelters and your property. Your shelters are also bed bug infested with scabies, MRSA, staph infections, meningitis, encephalitis, TB, hepatitis, and kissing diseases. And keep in mind, they are easily spreadable and highly contagious and lethal. Don't lump the decent homeless women and men with these gangbangers, wetbacks, and crackheads and junkies. It's atrocious. It's unconscionable. And number 24, don't buy the illegal guns back from the black market run by the Latino and Middle Eastern cartels, but napalm, napalm all the criminal underworld assholes like Latino gangbangers. Because all the ones who possess the guns, illegal guns, are indeed the gangbangers, not the law-abiding citizens. I support the NRA. They are law-abiding citizens and right... And they have the right to bear arms. And number 28, you said? You said 28, ma'am?
That's... ma'am, you need to keep track of the cards you forgot to speak on, but yes, 28.
Number 28. I'm sorry for the death of the... For the individual Tyrone Brown, probably killed by a wetback or a gangbanger. And you should go after the SOBs and deport the SOBs. Again, we got too many gangbangers killing people on the streets and nobody... The city attorney, Michael Fuer, isn't protecting not the blacks, not the browns, and not the white, and not the Asian citizens, law-abiding citizens. They're getting gunned down, vandalized, and killed all the time. And the city attorney, a pussy, Mike Fuer, does not prosecute the cases adequately, expeditiously, and makes... and does not respond to the people in the community. We're too busy asslicking the wetbacks and the gangbangers and their asses. These are nothing more than illegal undesirables committing crimes on a daily basis. Who goes after them? Certainly not you. You're too busy shoving your head up their asses. That's what you're doing while we're suffering living on the fucking streets. We're getting hit, attacked, and vandalized every day, killed, killed, killed by these fucking wetbacks. La cucaracha, man! Stop the crimes! Stop the crimes!
Ms. Ramirez, do you call the clock?
We are being damaged, the blacks, the Latino good, and the white, and the Asians. We're getting pummeled, beaten, robbed, and...
Stop her clock. Ms. Ramirez, I need you to calm down, okay? Ms. Ramirez, I'm gonna go ahead and give you your general public comment.
Okay, oh, my... oh, I'm sorry. Right. Sorry.
I'm gonna ask the members of the public... We need to move this meeting along. I know some of you are here to speak.
Thank you.
And you will have time to do so. I need you to wrap up your general public comment. I need the audience to just remain calm.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Gil Sidelio is a wetback, not an immigrant. I am an immigrant. Remember this. These illegal racists, hate-mongering, chigo wetbacks and gang-banging, ugly, filthy, nasty, venomously nosy and jealous, come and caca uncivilized savages are undesirables and not immigrants. They are pinchi nakos, inaka, thieves, thieves. They are... They have robbed America out of everything. It's now payback deportation assholes. Ladies and gentlemen, please stop all the money and goods. Do not donate to Our Lady of Queen Evangelist Church, La Placita. They do not donate the items like the blankets, clothing, and toiletries and services for the homeless, not the blacks, not to the Latino good people, not to the white, not to the Asian who are lawful homeless. And they need help. But they gobble it up among themselves. And two officers arrived yesterday. That was Officer Boyd and Montiago. And today, this morning, we had two wonderful officers. That was Officer Shaw.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Have a good day. Members of the public, I'm asking you one more time. Okay. Members? Okay, let's go ahead and take up item 23. Let's go ahead and take up item number 23, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
There's been a request to send this urgent forthwith, so let's go ahead and vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Let's go ahead and take up items 1 through 11. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those items pass. Let's go ahead and vote on items 18 through 22. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those items pass. Let's go ahead and take up item 25 to 28. Items 25 through 28. You want, Ms. Rodriguez, you want us to hold item 25?
I wanna speak on it, yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on 26 through 28 then. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, let's vote on items 30 through 31. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to speak on item 25 now?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, you know, again, we... I know we're all in this effort together to address the greatest humanitarian crisis that our city has ever experienced. And this declaration on the shelter crisis, having been in the San Fernando Valley, the one provider for this emergency winter shelter facility, I can speak to how important it is when we're talking about the overall efforts that we are deploying to create permanent supportive housing. This is the first stop for so many families to get into the coordinated entry system and to help finally get the services that they deserve. I wanna remind everybody about the incredible challenges that we have to meet, both in not just providing these facilities, but helping to make sure that in the communities that they are residing in, that we are identifying every opportunity to assure good partnership in the community, just as the mayor discussed yesterday in the state of the city. And again, I look forward to the further implementation of the successes that we've tried in the northeast San Fernando Valley in Pacoima as it relates to the Good Neighbor policy to help assure that we are doing all that we can to mitigate any impacts. I'm proud to say that as a result of some of the implementation, the programmatic, operational requirements that we had in the facility, both working with LASA and the service provider, we've seen a decrease in the need for sanitation services in the area. We've created a 24-hour hotline to assure that any potential issues are addressed immediately with the service provider. And I look forward to working with you many colleagues throughout the city to help assure that we are all rising to do our part in our shared responsibility to create, get these shelter locations in our districts so that we can help facilitate more families get into the permanent supportive housing that they deserve. Thank you so much for your support.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item 25. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. That item passes. Madam colleague, let's go ahead and take on item 29. There is a substitute motion that has been circulated.
Yes, and the first vote would be whether to substitute.
Okay, hold on for just a second, Mr. Weezer.
For item 23, 25, and soon to be voted on 29, if we could send those urgent forthwith, please?
Okay, 23 has already been sent urgent forthwith.
Okay.
So we can do that to 25, and as soon as we vote on 29...
Thank you very much.
That can be the direction. Thank you. So the... Mr. Buscaino, did you wanna speak on item 29?
So the first vote, again, would be on 29 on whether to substitute.
That's before us now, whether to substitute, members. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
And at the request of Mr. Weezer, can we send items 25 and 29 forthwith?
And a vote is required for that?
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take up item 17, members. Public comment was satisfied for this item in committee. We're gonna go ahead and allow 15 minutes of public comment. And I'm gonna call the first three speakers. If you could please come to the podium and line up. Caridad Vázquez, Agueda García, and Doug Smith.
And Madam President, as the speakers make their way forward, amending motion 17C has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Very well, thank you. And just for the record, we're gonna go ahead and allow 15 minutes of public comment on this item. Each speaker has one minute. We'll get to as many cards as possible in 15 minutes, okay? Necesita intérprete, señora? Un momentito. Un momentito, señora. We have an amendment that's been introduced. Did you wanna speak on that, Mr. Blumenthal? Okay. Disculpen, señora. Voy a dejar que el concejal hable, and luego usted, okay? Un momentito, go ahead.
Colleagues, it's been a lot of great work done on this, and I'm excited about getting street vending legalized in our city. I think it's really important that we do that. However, the motion before us is a little different than what was passed out of our joint committee and then what was passed by this body on the floor. When we... And there are two particular provisions that I wanted to basically revert back to the way we did it in joint committee. And so I'm gonna offer an amendment to have two options sent to the city attorney to create drafts. And I wanted to explain what those were and why I'm proposing that. When we voted as a council to originally send this, we did it with an opt-in provision where businesses would have to opt in. That was too restrictive and too harsh, I thought. And in committee, in our joint committee between Public Works and Economic Development, I mean, we unanimously decided to change that to an opt-out provision because we thought a lot of property owners would be hard to reach and it would be too harsh to require somebody to opt in. We also had some other things in there about restrictions on vending within 10 feet of a business entrance and within four feet of display window. Yesterday afternoon, there was an economic development committee that met late in the afternoon and added a number of very good provisions, but they also reversed two of the provisions that were decided upon the previous week in Economic Development Joint Committee. And for me, there's a policy issue here, so I wanted to make sure that we had the option to vote on both. So I'm going to make an amendment that asks that... We also ask the city attorney to draft an amendment that would include what was in the joint, basically Recommendation 8 of the joint report for the Economic Development Committee, which allowed for an opt-out for businesses, where businesses would be allowed to decide if they don't want vending in front of their business, they could opt out of it on an individual basis for the property, for their property up to the center line, which they have fee title to. The second part of that is allowing, putting back in the restrictions on vending within 10 feet of a business entrance and within four feet of display windows. That was included in the original report, and that is not in this new report. Everything else, as far as I'm concerned, the changes that were made are appropriate, and I'm happy to continue moving with them. But my motion is to allow those two provisions to be also drafted up by the city attorney as an option for our city council to consider, as well as the version that is before us, to allow that to be presented. So that... That's the amendment.
Okay, let's... Let us return to public comment.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Caridad Vázquez.
Good afternoon, uh, good morning. My name is Caridad Vázquez.
Y soy vendedor ambulante, y vengo de Boyle Heights.
I am a street vendor, and I come from Boyle Heights.
Antes que nada, pedirles a todos ustedes que nos apoyen a nuestra legalización. Y sobre lo que platicamos ayer fue algo muy positivo para nosotros.
First of all, I wanna ask you please to support us in the legalization of the street vending and what we talked about yesterday. I come from Boyle Heights.
Antes que nada, no al veto porque eso nos perjudica a nosotros los vendedores.
First of all, please, no to the business veto because that is really bad for us, the seller, the street vendors.
Y antes que nada, nosotros también dependemos, y nosotros vamos a llegar a arrimar dinero para que sigamos más adelante.
Uh, and we are also gonna contribute, and we're gonna have more money so we can go on with our lives.
Y esperamos su apoyo y sigan continuando a nuestra legalización.
And we are hoping for your support, and we are hoping for the legalization of street vending.
Gracias.
Thank you so much.
Buenas tardes, señores del Consilio. Mi nombre es Agueda García, soy vendedor ambulante.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Agueda García, I am a street vendor.
Estamos en completo desacuerdo al veto de negocio.
We do not agree with the... We do not agree with the business veto.
Trabajamos muy duro desde el amanecer hasta altas horas de la noche.
We work really hard from the morning to late at night.
Contribuimos con la economía de esta ciudad.
We con... We contribute with the economy of this city.
No somos homeless, somos una comunidad trabajadora.
We are not homeless, we're a community that works.
Pero nos negamos a seguir siendo extorsionados por los dueños de negocios.
But we do not want to be, uh, continue being extorted by the owners of the business.
Queremos una legalización justa.
We want to be legalized, and we want this to be just and fair.
Y no al veto de negocio.
No to, uh, no to the business veto.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Doug Smith. I'm an attorney at Public Council. We're here to urge you to move this program forward without the unjust and unworkable property owner veto that's been proposed. You've heard from vendors, and you'll continue to hear from vendors, about the ever-present risk of extortion and exploitation, and how the property owner veto will only intensify this risk. We hope that you'll take these stories to heart. But in addition, I also want to elevate some grave legal concerns with this proposal. I have a letter that I'm gonna submit from my organization, the ACLU, other, 10 other nonprofit legal services, uh, civil rights law firms from across Los Angeles outlining these concerns. A couple of these points. First, the California Constitution prohibits legislatures from giving control over municipal functions to a private individual entity like the property owner veto would do. Second, economic protectionism like this, favoring one type of business over another, is not a legitimate government interest. A court already threw out a similar policy in L.A. that was applied to food trucks. L.A. deserves a fair, inclusive, and legal permit program, and that's no property owner veto.
Thank you, thank you. So, uh, Rudy Espinoza, let's keep it down. Caridad Vázquez, Carla De Paz, Claire Fox. Please come forward. If I've called your name, please call forward, come forward. Akuda García. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Thank you, sir. My name is Rudy Espinoza. Uh, I work at a community development organization here in Los Angeles called Learn, and I'd like to just say that I hope that the city council moves forward a comprehensive and thoughtful legal permit system for street vendors and all the folks that are here today to hear about this. Specifically, I hope that we don't give extraordinary power to property owners. Uh, most of the city is poor, and a lot of folks are struggling, and we shouldn't give extraordinary power to property owners to ban people on sidewalks. And I'm hoping that this... This body says no to the business veto. It's super critical. Thank you.
Next.
Hello, my name... My name is Carla De Paz. I'm the Director of Community Organizing for the East L.A. Community Corporation. And our organization has been working with street vendors for the past 10 years. This effort that has become this campaign started in Boyle Heights and has spread throughout the city, to San Fernando, to San Pedro, to South Central. Vendors have been organizing. They've been saying that they want to be able to do this work under the law. They want to pay their taxes. They want to do this right. And it's really disheartening to hear the layers of restrictions, the layers of regulations, and then this business veto that will, uh, put them at danger of being extorted. We've heard from vendors. Vendors walk into our offices every day, telling us the stories of the harassment, of the money they have to pay, of the fear that they live every day with being, um, extorted by business owners and other entities. So I urge you to not support the property owner veto. There's other ways that we can resolve this. Vendors are more than willing to sit down with businesses, to mediate, to talk to the business community, to figure out solutions that, um, create safe sidewalks for everyone. But giving private property owners the power to do this is not...
Thank you. Next speaker. And I... Regina Garcia. Regina Garcia, Isabel Rodriguez, Mercedes Sanchez. Yes, identify.
All right, good morning. Hi, I'm Claire Fox. I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, and I'm here to support the recommendations that came out of the Economic Development Committee yesterday. It's time that we embrace street vendors as a part of our community and as a part of our economy, especially our food economy. The recommendations that came out of committee yesterday offer you, the city council, many tools to deal with the diverse needs of diverse communities in Los Angeles, including sidewalk, uh, special vending districts. These tools need to be used judiciously and not as tools of exclusion and discrimination across, uh, towards vendors. The property owner veto over sidewalks will lead to increased harassment, exploitation, and extortion of vendors. And as you can see, the majority of vendors who are here today and in this economy are women, and so you have to consider the gender justice aspect of this. We don't want to see women exploited on city sidewalks. This is one way that you can stand in solidarity with women workers, women entrepreneurs, such as sidewalk vendors. So we please urge you to move forward and pass the recommendations out of Economic Development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our interpreter's asking if I can, um, do the interpretation so she can interpret things that are being talked about.
Yes, ma'am.
Buenos dias, señores concejales.
Good morning, council members.
Mi nombre es Isabel Rodriguez.
My name is Isabel Rodriguez.
Soy vendedor ambulante a toda honra y madre soltera.
I'm an honorable street vendor and a single mother.
Me da tristeza que ustedes sean nuestros representantes. Ayer se acordó algo. Nos dieron mucha felicidad.
I'm sad that, uh, that... I'm sad at our council members right now. Yesterday, something was approved that gave us a lot of happiness.
El día de hoy nos estamos enterando que nos quieren regresar a la extorsión que somos sometidos por los negocios establecidos.
And then today, we're finding out that you want to go back to the extortion that we have to deal with by small businesses.
No estamos de acuerdo al veto a los... de los negocios.
We're not in agreeance with the business veto.
¿A qué nos están orillando, señores concejales?
You are pushing us to a corner.
A ser extorsionados.
Where we will be extorted.
A no tener nuestros salarios que tenemos que llevar a nuestros hogares.
To not be able to take our full salaries home.
Están creando violencia y extorsión a nuestras personas.
You're encouraging violence and extortion.
Les pido de favor que hagan conciencia que también somos honorables y respetuosos.
I ask you to have consciousness that we're also honorable and respectful.
De verdad, les pido que hagan conciencia. ¿A qué nos están obligando ustedes a nosotros? No somos homeless, estamos enfermos, miren. Andamos discapacitados, y aún así estamos al pie de la lucha.
I ask you to have consciousness. We... Some of us are disabled, and we're still here trying to fight for this.
Next speaker. Uh, before you start, if I can get Anna Maria Gil, Ofelia Ruiz, Gilbert Salcedo. Yes, ma'am.
Buenas tardes, señores concejales.
Good afternoon, council members.
Mi nombre es Mercedes Sanchez.
My name is Mercedes Sanchez.
Y estoy frustrada.
And I feel frustrated.
Enojada.
Angry.
Decepcionada que el día de ayer me fui a mi casa con la gran felicidad.
Because yesterday I went home with feeling happy.
De saber que ustedes no estaban a favor de un veto de negocio.
To know that you wouldn't support a business veto.
Pero hoy llegamos, escuchamos la oposición, escuchamos el sentir de toda la gente que llegó aquí.
We heard the opposition, we heard the feelings that they have against us.
Para no solo hablar de nosotros, sino quitarnos el sustento porque eso es lo que van a hacer ustedes.
And do... By doing this, you will take away our livelihood.
Al votar en contra del veto de negocio, nos están desplazando de nuestro... de nuestro trabajo.
If you support a business veto, we will be displaced from our work.
Yo en las noches tengo necesidad de vender en Hollywood. Vendo hot dogs.
At nighttime, I have the need to sell in Hollywood. I sell hot dogs.
Y no se me hace justo que yo trabaje hasta las tres y media de la mañana para tener mi sustento, y ustedes le quieran dar el poder a los negocios, el poder a la gente rica que tiene tanto dinero que yo solo necesito para comer.
I have to work till 3:00 a.m. in the morning, and I don't think it's fair that you want to give the right to business owners who make more money to not let me do my work.
Por favor, señores concejales.
Thank you very much.
Póngase la mano en el corazón.
Next speaker.
Solo queremos comer.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Next speaker. Next speaker, please. Let's keep it down so we can hear from as many speakers as possible. Yes, identify yourself, sir.
Mi nombre es Cesar Palma. Buenas tardes.
My name is Cesar Palma. Good afternoon.
Soy vendedor de La Siete y Alvarado.
I'm a vendor on Seventh and Alvarado.
Estoy aquí porque estoy en contra del veto.
I'm here against the business veto.
Sabes de la extorsión del distrito de La Piñata, y no quiero verme esclavizado por dueños de negocios porque este es un trabajo que lo único que va a traer es violencia. Ayer nos fuimos contentos.
In terms of the extortion, I know that it's happening in the Piñata district, and I don't want to be enslaved to the extortion and the violence.
Ayer nos fuimos contentos porque todo salió a nuestro favor, y ahora estamos viendo de que la moneda se nos está dando vuelta porque por todos lados hay extorsión.
Yesterday, we felt happy because we felt that we would be able to move forward, and now we're seeing that things are turning, and people are supporting the extortion.
Estamos aquí porque estoy en contra del... del veto, y queremos un permiso justo.
We... I'm here against the business veto, and we want a fair permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Buenos dias, Consilio de Los Ángeles. Mi nombre es Doris García.
Hello, council... Uh, L.A. City Council, my name is Doris García.
Y vendo en el área de Hollywood.
And I vend on Holly... In the area of Hollywood.
La reintroducción de un veto de negocio colocaría a los vendedores ambulantes que mantienen distritos como Hollywood Boulevard.
The returning of the business veto would place vendors that maintain areas like Hollywood Boulevard.
A la mercé de los dueños de negocios.
At the mercy of the small businesses.
Como trabajadores cuyo sustento depende de este tipo de economía.
As workers whose livelihood depends on this type of economy.
Reconocemos que debemos hacer concesiones, pero un veto de negocio no es la forma de abordar la falta de claridad política.
We understand that there has to be a compromise, but a business veto is not the good way to go about negotiating and having, uh, clear politics.
En una ciudad como Los Ángeles.
In a city like Los Angeles.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Gilbert Salcedo. I am a co-president of the National Lawyers Guild, and the National Lawyers Guild has been working for many years to try to get this ordinance passed. It's long due, overdue, and we are looking forward to it... That version that gets passed is a fair and streamlined process to get permits for vendors without giving a veto to business owners, without having undue fees and not having, uh, the city provisions allowing the city to confiscate property from the vendors. Uh, the National Lawyers Guild has sued the city before for property confiscation, so I think if there's an ordinance passed allowing confiscation of property, the city may be exposing itself to legal liability. That being said, I'm really glad you're bringing this up for a vote, and I'm hoping... I'm really hoping that you pass a fair and streamlined process, vendor-friendly process to getting permits, and that, uh, just as we were celebrating here today, uh, Mr. Gilbert, Councilman Salcedo's tremendous effort towards passing AB 60, a year from now, we'll be here celebrating all of you passing a fair...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. Please come forward and identify yourself. Okay, then if I could get Brad Kaiserman. Is there Brad Kaiserman here? Okay, you'll be the last speaker. Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, good morning. My name is Brad Kaiserman. I'm an attorney living in Hollywood and here on behalf of L.A. Forward and my peers to express support for a private... for a vibrant street vendor presence both in Hollywood and throughout the city of Los Angeles, and specifically am against the business veto as I believe it will further increase the disparity in power between those who have economic wealth and those that do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes... That concludes, uh, general public comment. Okay, and you know, but if... Where's Mr. Price? You know, Mr. Price, uh, going forward, uh, what... What is before us today is an instruction to the city attorney's office to draft an ordinance. Uh, I know that there are individuals on this council that would like to see, uh, a business veto. I know that there are individuals on this council that would not support that. But maybe... Maybe the approach would be to instruct an option, and then when the city attorney brings the ordinance back, that that might be the more appropriate time for the council as a whole to debate this. And so I'm just trying to see if there's a way that we can move forward, uh, with some kind of positive action today. And I thought maybe that would be one way to do it. And, um, I'm just curious as to where you are and how you want to proceed. And I would think that even if we did that, you would not have to be supportive of both options, but in fairness to colleagues that want more time, then that would be an option that we could afford them. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I'm not supportive of that option, uh, Mr. President. I certainly appreciate the, uh, the need to deliberate, and that's why I'm anxious to hopefully get this, uh, to the city... Give some instructions to the city attorney to draft the ordinance so that we can have a discussion. But I'm not comfortable with the, uh, with the... With the proposal as presented, and I think that it, uh, is not necessary at this time.
Let us hear from some of the other members, and maybe what we'll have to do is we just take a vote and figure out the proper approach as we... Because I believe there is a commitment on this body to at least move this forward, have it put in printed form so that we can all properly study it and to move forward.
If I... If I can just make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
Mr. President, please. Again, thank you, members. We are on the brink of taking historic action today that I think is long overdue. Uh, five years ago, Councilman Weezer and I proposed legalizing street vending, uh, as cities have done all over the world. Uh, and we engaged in a real collaborative deliberative process, literally hundreds of meetings over that period of time. Uh, subsequently, Councilman Joe Busciano became actively engaged and offered a framework, much of which we are utilizing, in fact, today. In front of us now is a proposed draft ordinance that puts teeth into enforcement to ensure a healthy and safety of our communities. The status quo is simply not good enough. It's just not good enough. I'm afraid that at this rate, it may even worsen unless we do something, take some positive affirmative action. We can debate these regulations until the cows come home, uh, but it's not doing a service to anyone, not doing a service to the community, not doing a service to businesses who want some certainty, uh, not doing a service to vendors that want to come out of the shadows. Yesterday, the Economic Development Committee approved a series of recommendations regarding sidewalk vending. We did our best to bring you a proposal that takes into account your concerns as well as those of vendors and the business community. We included a recommendation for the CLA to meet with each council office to discuss areas in their districts that have health and safety concerns and to take in account input from our law enforcement agencies. We included the use of technology in helping to disseminate the program information, allowing online applications and mapping of vendor locations. We instructed the drafting of an RFP to solicit service providers to operate the program, including community outreach, application assistance, and expungement services. We included a development of... We included the development of enforcement protocols to deal with areas like entertainment venues, like Hollywood Boulevard, where we cannot accommodate additional traffic and need to ensure pedestrian safety. Also, uh, in committee yesterday, uh, we removed the business veto, and that's why I cannot, uh, support the amendment proposed by my colleague, uh, this morning. Instead, we offer an alternative appeals process, uh, like that which we use for other public works permits, and it allows business input, uh, but protects vendors, uh, from possible harassment and extortion. I believe that before you is a fair and balanced policy that protects vendors, allows business input, and gives the council the ability to weigh in on their specific district needs. I ask that you support the Economic Development Committee's report from April 16th. Item 17A on today's agenda, uh, and I look forward to working with you as we work the details out to create an environment that's going to be a positive, not just for vendors, uh, but for neighboring businesses and the committee at large. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and this certainly has been a long time coming. Uh, it's been a long time since, uh, 2013, when Councilmember Price and myself first introduced a motion to ask the city to look at us getting some regulations that will regulate, uh, street vending. And we are one of the last remaining large cities in the country to regulate street vending, uh, and we think it's appropriate to do so. Why? Because our vendors are the ones urging us to do this. In the past, the city wanted to regulate them, and they didn't want it. But now they step forward and say, hey, look, we want to come out of the shadows, participate, pay taxes, have the county provide us with health permits should we sell food. And on the other hand, uh, the brick and mortar businesses are saying, hey, let's regulate this. It's out of control. We don't have a handle on this. And some of the consumers who buy food on the streets are asking themselves, am I eating something that's safe, whether it's stored at the appropriate, uh, temperature? So what we're doing today makes sense for everybody. Everyone benefits. And to the street vendors and everyone else who has been urging us to do this for a very long time, uh, I've seen many big pieces of legislation come through this council, and when we're only arguing about one little thing at the... It's not little, but one thing at the end, I think we're gonna get there soon. So it's good news. It's very good news that we're at this point and we're debating... Very good news that we're at this point and we're debating what makes sense and how to move forward. I think what Mr. Price came up with makes sense, because at the end of the day, if we keep the item in there that only allows two per block or two per, or a certain radius, and you have to provide notice to the brick and mortar business that somebody's getting a permit, and that brick and mortar business can appeal it, should there be a health and safety issue, that I think makes sense to me. Otherwise, I think we're going to have a lot more appeals, whether somebody just doesn't like something or not, while at the same time, we're allowing this to be spread out. So it's a good compromise in terms of what Mr. Price came up with. It makes sense, and I think that's what something we should move forward with. But I understand the concerns from our business community that says that, well, look, we've been struggling with this. It's out of control. The city can't enforce it, and they keep calling and calling and calling. What's key to this as well is whether we go with a compromise or not, is that we have an effective enforcement unit. That's really going to be what tells us whether this works or not, whether we go with Mr. Blumenfield's proposal or we stick with the Economic Development Committee. This won't work, and the only way it will work is if we do have sufficient enforcement. And that's something that Mr. Price has briefed up. He's looked at it, and that's sometimes why these things take so long. We want to make sure we do them right. So we've come a long way. I ask that we move forward. And again, thank you, Mr. Price, for your hard work on this. It's not easy, as the city attorney told us yesterday, one of the most complicated policy issues they've had to look at, and they had to do a lot of research along with the CLA and others to look at other cities as to what they're doing. And Mr. Buscaino, thank you so much as well. In your committee, when you put some more fire under this, gave us a framework to move forward, decriminalize street vending, that really put some impetus for us to move forward and be here today. Long time coming. We need to do it. We're usually leading the country on legislation, on good public policy, and this one, we're behind. Let's move forward and show the nation that we're capable of still being the leader in this country. Thank you so much.
Mr. Sadiel. Let's keep it down. Let's keep it. Let us keep it down. Let us keep it down. Let's keep it down. Mr. Sadiel, floor is yours.
Mr. President, let me thank you for, again, bringing us together to solve a very large vaccine problem that confronts our city. Let me give praise to Mr. Buscaino and Weisar and Senator Price for their leadership on this matter. This is, as Mr. Weisar just stated, a problem that has been addressed and resolved and solved in many major cities of this country. And if you get an opportunity to travel the world, you see that this is also something that is very typical, very woven into the tourism and the economic and retail reality of many great cities of the world. And so there's no reason why here in Los Angeles, we should not come to a resolution that meets the needs of all those who are involved. It's a very balancing dilemma for us, Mr. Weisar. You stated it perfectly. I, during my campaign, would go across the street to this fruit vendor frequently to find solace and find a place to get away from my campaign and my staff, and it was frequently brought to my... Let's be honest, I suffer from candor. So, speaking to the proprietor, I found out all the concerns they had. They had to pay taxes, they had to pay disability insurance, they had to pay minimum wage, they had to provide restrooms, they had to provide ADA. It, in fact, creates a competitive disadvantage in many instances for those who have bricks and mortar. On the other hand, we are not going to criminalize people who are working, engaging in this practice of retail, beginning what in many instances will become one of the most successful businesses of our communities. And I think of Jody Maroney, I think of Frito Lay, I think of many of these businesses and companies that began as street vendors. And so we're not going to criminalize that activity because it's the vitality of our city. And so I think it's important to be very clear where we're at. Mr. Price, I agree with you. The proposal is sound. It is clear. It has been laid out. I think to do otherwise raises more questions than answers. There is a question of it being arbitrary and capricious. There's a question of there being a clear legal standard and standard of review. If we provide a business veto, we are giving away the, not only the power of the city, but the authority, the duty and the obligation of the city to regulate business and land use in the city. And so that, obviously for a policy reason, is objectionable and unsatisfactory. Finally, let me say and applaud those street vendors who are here, who have taken the courage, much like the million motorists who also took the courage to join the mainstream, to become integrated into the economy, to become part of the social fabric of this society. Quiero decir gracias a todos los vendedores que están aquí. Este, quiero decir gracias a ustedes. Felicidades porque tú quieres vivir aquí en una manera legal. Quieres cumplir con la ley, pero nosotros necesitamos hacer leyes que son aceptables, que tienen razón, que tienen la oportunidad por ustedes para vivir aquí en la ley, abajo de la ley. Todos venir aquí para realizar sus sueños y la ciudad están aquí para ayudar a ustedes por eso. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you so much. I said to... I wanted to conclude by encouraging immigrants who live in our city to continue to comply with the law, to take advantage of the opportunities that exist in this city that unfortunately don't exist in other cities and states of our nation, to comply with the law, to take advantage of those legal opportunities that exist. I believe that immigrants come here to realize their greatest dreams and aspirations, and that given an opportunity to comply with the law, that they will do so. And I think this morning earlier, we had a demonstration of that, and so I applauded them, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Sadiel. Mr. Bonin.
And thank you for, to Mr. Price, Mr. Buscaino, and everybody who's worked on this issue. This has taken a long time to get to this point, and I acknowledge that, and it's taken too long. But it's taken this long because this is a particularly wrenching issue for this body to consider, because this issue touches on really every single third rail of Los Angeles politics. Whether we're candid about it or not, it touches upon issues of race and of class. It touches upon issues of livelihood and neighborhood character. It touches upon issues of opportunity and privilege and the struggle to navigate from one to the other. And it touches upon differing visions and needs that people have from the city of Los Angeles. And I think that the work that has been done for a very long time was good. We need to strike a balance between all of those very, very difficult things. And I think that we were very close to that. But then things changed yesterday afternoon. And not everybody knows that things changed yesterday afternoon. In an issue this divisive, only one side has been testifying today. And that's because most businesses, whether you agree with them or not, weren't aware of what was happening yesterday and aren't aware of the changes. And some can characterize the change as removing the business veto. Some in the business community would say that what we have done is, in this current proposal, the change is we're imposing a brick and mortar penalty. The people who work very hard to open a business deal with the nonsense of some of our city bureaucracies, deal with all sorts of issues, and struggle to make their ends meet. Some immigrants, and many not, are now going to be penalized, because we've taken away much of their ability to weigh in, and we've taken out a provision that was in there until yesterday that said you couldn't set up within a certain distance from a doorway or in front of someone's display window. So given the way that we have severely impacted businesses in Los Angeles due to some of the unintended consequences of Recicla, I'm very concerned about us acting quickly today, having made a very significant change yesterday that impacts businesses that have not had an opportunity to weigh in here today. Our neighborhood councils haven't weighed in on a very dramatic change, our chambers haven't, our businesses, and I dare say, most of them are unaware that this discussion is even happening today. There may be things in what was done yesterday that can bring comfort to them, and that could make me more comfortable with it. I don't know yet, because we're, what we have before us is not specific enough to tell. Is that appeals process muscular enough? Does it make those of us who have reservations comfortable that it balances those needs sufficiently? It's not quite clear. And that's why I support Mr. Blumenfield's motion, which would allow us to have two options to consider when this comes back. Something that is exactly what Mr. Price is proposing, and something that looks much more like what was before the committee at the start of deliberations yesterday, that our neighborhoods can weigh in on, our neighborhood councils can weigh in on, our vendors can weigh in on, our small brick and mortar businesses could weigh in on. And I think we need to do that. It does not slow down at all, this process, for everybody who is seeking clarity. All it does is give us the opportunity to hear from more people and make an informed choice about what the proper balance is when the ordinance comes back. So I strongly support Mr. Blumenfield's motion.
Okay, no, 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 no. Let's keep it down. Mr. Englander, you're not just, let us have this conversation. Now, Mr. Englander.
Thank you. And Mike, thank you for framing that, as complicated as this is. This is, in fact, one of the most sensitive ordinances that we've grappled with in a long time. And we're actually not, what's before us today is actually not to decriminalize street vending. In fact, we did that when we started this process, and it's sort of been the Wild, Wild West, because we haven't had rules and regulations at all. And reasonable, fair rules and regulations sound like that would be simple, but it's not. In fact, I think you thanked the appropriate folks who have worked on this around this horseshoe, but there are many others. They are, most of us, have actually probably spent more time on this ordinance that aren't on the committee, in that policy committee, than most ordinances. I know, for me, I've gone out to every chamber of commerce multiple times over the last several years. Neighborhood councils have asked every single one to weigh in on this and give us our thoughts, their thoughts, their ideas, their suggestions. In fact, not just in my district, but I wrote a letter when we started this, asking for every neighborhood council in the entire city to weigh in. It's the first time I've done that. In fact, many did, and I thank them for that. They didn't just weigh in on it, they deliberated it. They looked at it from every different angle. And you're right, there's, at the end of it, isn't simple. But it's also because of the way you framed it, which is absolutely spot on, a third rail. It becomes one, while an elected body can't tie the future hands of another, that means we have the ability to make changes if things don't work at a later date. This is one of those Prop 13 issues that there is no change for many, many years, right or wrong, whether things work in any other neighborhood or not. It's just not going to come up. It's complicated, and I get it, rightfully so. I'm thrilled and grateful that Mr. Price has agreed to at least give us 30 days, once we have the draft ordinance, and it won't be rushed, and we have 30 days once we have it from the city attorney. I'm grateful for that, because sometimes, in this building, we get a draft ordinance back, it gets scheduled for committee, there's a placeholder for council, and it's before we've even read it. That won't happen on this one. What I am concerned about, though, is that the changes from the committee meeting yesterday, after years of working with this and looking at options, I just got this morning, just this morning, I haven't had time to go to anybody in my community who's spent hours and hours, weeks, in fact, months and years, coming up with options that all made it into the final committee recommendations, not before us today. I'm disappointed in that, particularly in how much work everybody's put into this. I'm very disappointed in the process that we're getting this today, and that there's been a reasonable option that I think should be reconsidered. A reasonable option that says, at one, just one element of this, that we're asking the city attorney, which we do often, we do it often, the city attorney to come back with two options, that it's written in and codified into an ordinance, so we can actually see the legal language, that goes back to Mr. Price's committee, not any of us. It's the committee recommendation that comes before this council floor. I think that's reasonable, and that's why I support Bob's recommendation. Don't support any of this moving forward without it, because I think we've come too far, and it's been too emotional. And we're trying to do the right thing here for everyone equally, a balance. It's not always easy. There is no simple fix. There is no one policy, one ordinance fits all communities equally, everywhere, all the time. That's why we love Los Angeles, because we are diverse, and we give opportunities to everyone in a fair and balanced manner as much as possible. And I think we're close to doing that. But I think we need to have some reasonable language to at least consider, and I thank all the folks, not that do this for a living, or that were elected to, or our staff, or the various committees, but the ones that don't, because we heard from a lot of people that usually don't weigh in. And you know what? It's a turn off to them if their voices aren't heard, and we actually, those recommendations came out of both policy committee meetings, or at least the final reports, and then didn't make it to the floor today. I think at that one, what I would call a reasonable request to have a city attorney draft the option for us to just look at, makes sense. But I do thank everybody for weighing in on this, because it's a very important piece of policy before us today. Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Great, thank you. I won't speak to the substance of this again, because we mentioned that a little bit when I proposed the amending motion to the substitute amendment. But just from a process perspective, I do hope that we can move forward on something where the, what was unanimously decided by Public Works Committee, of which this was duly referred to and heard in a joint committee with testimony and hearings, that the salient part of that gets to be drafted up so that we can decide on it. For me, I'd like to know the legal ramifications. I've heard some things said in public comment. I heard the city attorney say things during the closed session and during the open session and behind chambers about the different liabilities of the two different options versus, you know, the opt-out option versus the notification option. I think there are real issues that need to be fleshed out in terms of that little provision. It's nice that we're down to that little issue, because all of these other issues that are part of this, that have been the result of all this work, I think we're all in agreement on. And Chairman Price has done an amazing job of moving all of that forward. So we have a little bit of a policy question and a little bit of a process question of being able to hear what a committee that was duly referred to heard and unanimously adopted, whether we get to get that put into legislative language so we can evaluate it, the two options before us. So that's why I put that forward. Thank you.
Mr. Price, did you want to wrap this up?
Again, I just want to thank all the comments that have been made, and I appreciate the thoughtful consideration and suggestions that have been made by my colleagues. I just feel at this point, however, the veto power of businesses over vendors is just not proper, it's not appropriate. We have proposed a review process, similar to that which we do for street, sidewalk vending and other, I'm sorry, sidewalk eating and other programs. I think it's a, it's a system that holds up, but it is certainly one that is going to require everyone to participate in. And so while I don't support the amendment, I do support this process moving forward. I'm excited that we're at this point, and I appreciate the input, not only from colleagues, not only from vendors, not only from businesses, but from neighbors as well. And again, Mr. President, I urge an I vote. Thank you.
Okay, members, we have been discussing this for a very long time. I think that this council has a track record of trying its very best to always come to a consensus. I know... I know that I personally believe that we could move everything forward and have a discussion when this would come back to us by the city attorney's office. But, given the tone of the conversation today, if there was ever a time that maybe we just need to separately vote on these issues, that time is today. Sometimes we can't always pull it together. And Lord knows that we try very hard to do that. So I know there's a lot of work that's been done on both sides, but maybe the best way to do this, and let me ask the clerk, the first vote, if we just take this as, you know, what has transpired today during this conversation, what would be the first vote of this council?
The first vote would be on the motion made by Blumenfield and seconded by Mr. Bonin, which would request that the city attorney draft an alternative which adds back restrictions on vending and within a certain four feet of display windows.
Okay, so, Mr. Blumenfield, is that not...
Unless you would like to clarify that, please.
That we're not asking it as the alternative. We're asking to send both to the city attorney so the city attorney can bring back both the option that was put forward in economic development and the option that was put forward unanimously in the Economic Development Joint Committee with Public Works, specifically on number eight, which was really the only point of contention, number eight and item 1E.
Okay, so now, on this, Mr. Blumenfield is requesting an i-vote. Mr. Price is requesting a no vote. So, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six i's, nine no's.
Okay, the next vote, Madam Clerk, would be on what issue? Or is there a way to incorporate the Mr. O'Farrow motion into... I was not... I did not hear if Mr. Price viewed that as friendly. I thought that was... So can we just have a vote on both of those, or must that be separate as well?
A motion can be made to adopt the Economic Development Committee report as amended by motion 17C.
Okay, so I make that motion as seconded by Mr. Price. So on this issue, let's open the roll.[1221.14][1221.14](audience clapping) So let's...[1225.28][1225.28](audience clapping) This is item... This is the committee's report as amended by... Is it 17C?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what it is. So if we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven i's, four no's.
Okay, so what is before... So that is approved. What is before this body, Madam Clerk?
That takes counsel to either a special motion one, or I believe there's a request to reconsider an item.
Okay, Mr. Weezer.
Item 27, can we reconsider that? We had an amending motion that's a technical amendment on 27A. Adopt 27A, please.
On 27, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.[1284.14][1284.14](audience clapping)
Okay, so now let's vote on it as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.
Okay, that brings us where?
A special motion has been distributed by Councilman Buscayeno's office.
I don't have it.[1310.14][1310.14](audience clapping) Special one.[1314.83][1314.83](audience clapping)
Mr. Buscayeno, we don't... Has this been circulated? Or I know a few members...
Special has been circulated, colleagues.[1337.14][1337.14](audience clapping) So colleague before you is special one here. Just know, in the Trade, Travel and Tourism Committee, we held a special...[1356.14][1356.14](audience cheering)
Okay, wait a minute. Please, please let us continue our business and congratulations, but let us please continue our business. Please, Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you. So in T3 Committee, we held a special meeting on... At the port on November 28, 2017, to hear firsthand from truckers and warehouse workers, a subject of the USA Today investigative report from last June entitled "Rigged: Forced Into Debt, Work Past Exhaustion, Left With Nothing." We heard in that special T3 Committee hours-long of testimony from port truckers, warehouse workers indicating working many, many hours, being underpaid, 16-hour shifts, working weeks without having... Be able to afford rent and put food on the table and while netting chump change. On January 8, the city attorney, Mike Fuhr, filed a lawsuit on behalf of the people of California alleging unfair business practices by three trucking and warehouse companies. And one of the three companies was California Cardage Company, LLC. And on Thursday, April 5, the Board of Harbor Commissioners approved a one-year foreign trade zone operating agreement between the Harbor Department and Cal Cardage to continue operating its warehouse located at 2401 East PCH in Wilmington. The foreign trade zones provide substantial tax savings for the companies that operate them. And this council, I believe, should exert jurisdiction over this matter to further review the propriety of giving tax benefits to a company that has routinely misclassified its workers and independent contractors. So I ask for an i-vote moving forward.
Okay, let's first... This will be two votes. Let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve i's, one no.
Now we'll actually vote on the issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen i's.
Okay, let me call... Where are we now? Madam Clerk?
Council now has motions for posting and referral.
No, I think we still have some general public comment. So I'm gonna... Emmanuel May, Dr. Tom Williams, Frank Langston, please come forward. Daisy, please come forward. If I called your name, please come forward. Is this Jacqueline Richardson, maybe? If you're here, come forward. Richard Robson, Rosa Miranda? Please, if... Ms. Richardson, is that you? You want to speak? Please come forward.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I can make a quick announcement before Ms. Richardson speaks. Committee will start at 1:30. Environment and Energy and Environment, scheduled for 1 o'clock, will now start at 1:30.
Okay, that committee will start at 1:30.
Thank you.
E and E? Yes, Ms. Richardson?
I'd like to make a request. The request is for the city of Los Angeles, in the city of Los Angeles only, in the housing projects, to request washing machines for each unit. The reason for this request is that it'll help the children be better behaved, the neighborhood will be nicer, and the people will also get along better with the police department. For the foregoing reasons, I ask that this request be done immediately or as soon as possible so that it will benefit the children. I do believe they'll be better behaved, and the community will be better, and the people will get along, I believe, much better with the police department. So I ask for this request to be done as soon as possible.
Thank you. Richard Robinson, Richard? Richard? And again, Mary Ann, Miriam, Frank Langford, Emmanuel May. Yes, or Richard?
Mr. President, members, Angela Bassett has a new motion picture out. Probably heard Black Panther. This is a very important motion picture. Some folks don't realize that the black race is the progenitor of the human species. The black gene is a dominant gene, the white gene is recessive. Life didn't get started in Africa and Scandinavia at the same time. The white race is our offspring. Ryan Coogler has made an extraordinarily important point. Now, I see the future of race relation in the United States of America as sort of tied to this tipping point at which the public becomes aware in the United States of America of truth. So if you have the time, or if you haven't seen it yet, Black Panther is at AMC and other theaters. Thank you.[1697.14][1697.14](audience clapping)
Okay, there are no other public comment cards, so we're closing public comment. Now we're at posting and referred. They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members, announcements. I don't see any announcements. If all could please rise for adjourning motions. If all could please rise. Looking to my left, I don't see any. Looking to my right, members, this meeting is adjourned.